Good evening. The City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 18th, 2015 will come to order. Let the record show that all planning commissioners are absent present and accounted for except for Commissioners Stoll and Gassino who are absent and excused. Do we have any -- we have members of the public here. Are there any non-agenda public comments? And our agenda today is the continuation of the public hearing on our periodic plan and code update, a first integrated review of all the subarea plans, but are there any non-agenda public comments?
I don't find it's agenda or public.
Is your -- well, is yours related to the plan? Gary, it is. Alright, so we'll give you an opportunity soon. Seeing no other, we have no minutes to approve this evening. I'm not aware of any new business. Staff, is there any new business? Seeing, hearing none. We'll then move to a continuation of our public hearing that has been going on for the last year, which is a public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update. Last week, we did an integrated review of the major citywide plan elements. There are 13 of them that we reviewed. This evening, we will be reviewing each of the 17 subarea plans. Bothell is comprised of 17 subareas, and we'll be going through each one of them. We'll take time where we need to, and if we can move quickly, because we have previously worked on each one, we will. Before we start this review, is there any type of presentation from staff or any type of staff comments before we move forward?
I do have a brief presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Boyd.
Good evening. I just wanted to do a brief presentation on some new items in the down -- related to the downtown subarea regulations tonight. So, tonight, we are going to be covering the integrated packet of the 17 subarea plans. Other than the transportation sections, which will be presented to you on April 1st, now, no significant changes have been made since the -- your preliminary approval of these subareas, with the exception of the downtown subarea. There are a few changes being proposed for the downtown subarea regulations that were not in the February 11th preliminary recommendation. So, I wanted -- they are included in your packet, and they were highlighted, but I wanted to touch on them here. So, very briefly, we had talked about the height limit changes, but they hadn't been incorporated into the actual chart, so they are now. More substantively, we talked about the concept of a cap on the number of parking spaces required for downtown residential developments with more than two bedrooms per unit, and -- but I hadn't prepared any specific code language for you. So, that is in your packet here tonight, and we did settle on a cap that's the same as the citywide requirement of 2.2 per unit. So, basically, it's .75 per bedroom, but for units of two bedrooms or more, it's 2.2 per unit. So, that provides for a townhouse-type development that may have room in the development for two cars, in the actual townhouse for two cars. It would provide for anything with three or more townhouses to start providing some other parking for guests or additional vehicles that the residents might own. We are aware that there could be an unintended consequence that we're going to be looking into further, and we'll be able to report back to you on when we do come back on April 1st, related to how this might play out in the event that we get development applications for an appodment-type development or residential suites where they create multiple individually leased rooms that typically share a common kitchen, but classify them as a single unit. So, we're going to look into that a little bit to make sure that we're not creating a loophole here for those kinds of developments. Again, in addition to the height limit, in the main table for the downtown neighborhood, there is a special four-story overlay where the height limit would apply, the revised height limit would apply as well, which I don't believe I pointed out before. And then, this is a brand-new element that we decided to bring forward at this point after getting a request, and this is, we've gotten several requests for retail, pedestrian-oriented retail development that's not in the downtown core district. They are allowed in the downtown neighborhood district, but only if they're adjacent to the downtown core or in a contiguous row of shop fronts from the downtown core. But, we see that as problematic, and we had an inquiry about a business that wanted to go in on Main Street, in the downtown neighborhood portion of Main Street, but separated from what could be considered pedestrian retail by one use. And it seemed a very appropriate use. It would move things in the direction we want to go, but strictly reading the code as it is now, it wouldn't be allowed. And the reason for this limitation was, there was a concern that our development, retail development was too dispersed, and we wanted to create that critical mass in the core. But, what we're finding is that the retail development market is fairly weak, and new developments that could have put, like Six Oaks, that could have had retail all around the base, have only done the minimum required. So, we don't really see the, in the current environment, the danger of too dispersed retail development, and we think that the current restriction is just too restrictive. And so, we're proposing to just eliminate that entirely. So, that's a new thing that was in the packet tonight. And then, just one more. We had talked about the requirement that allow, for maximum parcel perimeter and allows dividing large blocks into multiple parcels, either with new streets or new open spaces. The code doesn't currently define what kind of open space, but it does say that it can't just be a mere passage of 20 feet in width. So, we had proposed earlier a requirement that it have a minimum width of 20 feet, but an average of 30. We've gotten some feedback since then that that might be difficult to attain, so we're proposing an average of 25. So, that would still allow you to create a linear open space with some larger nodes and that might neck down to 20 feet in some areas. So, we think that still gets at the intent of the plan. Oh, sorry, one more. This one has to do with an issue that has come up with these new developments that don't have out, typically in our more suburban development, garbage enclosures, dumpster enclosures are in a parking lot and more readily accessible. In parking structures, they're not always designed to accommodate garbage trucks, so they need to wheel out the dumpsters and load them on. And we've had a situation where one new development is parking their dumpsters on the street, which we want to make clear that that is not allowed. The code already does not allow that because it would require a public area use permit, but we wanted to put it, reinforce that with a provision here in the downtown plan. And, that, oh, I, okay. That is the extent of my slideshow. I had a, I thought I had a slide with some prompts for motion, but I'll turn it back over to you. Basically, we will take any comments on any other subarea plans tonight. Obviously, we'll take public testimony, and then, at the end, we are proposing that instead of continuing to next week, to continue the hearing to April 1st, to give us one more week to pull together the input we've had to date and bring you a complete final package.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Really appreciate it. So, are there any immediate questions to Dave of his presentation? I know he kind of specifically went right into these downtowns specific. We could do that at the time we review the downtown subarea plan, but if there's any other questions, just, I guess I would say relative to our overall agenda this evening, this would be a time to bring it up. Commissioner Clark?
If we're going to go through this when we get to the downtown plan, I'm fine until then.
Okay. Let's hold off on any specifics that may have come up relative to downtown when we go through that particular subarea. At this point, we'd like to turn it over to any member of the public that is here that would like to speak, and we've given you an opportunity to speak to the non, any non-agenda item, so hopefully, your comments are related in some way to the periodic plan or to one of the subareas related to it or one of the actions that we are going to be looking at this evening. So, are there any members of the public who would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am. If you could just state your name and address for the record, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes, plus or minus, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Davina Duer, and I live 17410, 107th Place Northeast. That's off of Riverside.
Excuse me, Sabina?
Davina.
Davina. Alright. And your last name?
Duer. D-U-E-R-R.
Thank you.
So, I'm here to give comments regarding the Furman rezone. My neighborhood is obviously in that area, and we live in a PUD, and it's 96, R-9600, but it's a PUD. And so, I know that there's been some discussion that, oh, well, it would be similar, this rezone, to our neighborhood, except it wouldn't be a PUD. And so, I wanted to point that out and also discuss some of the reasons why I think we should wait. The first reason is because of the slides. The latest King County map that I saw is 2009. Our neighborhood had a slide, a pretty severe slide, I think, four years ago. And we ended up with over two feet of mud in our neighbor, in one of our neighbors' garages, and all over a little traffic circle section, and all of the neighbors had to come and clean it up. It was land, it was a landslide that came off of the promontory. A neighbor up there lost about 10 feet of his yard, and we owned it after that. And we continued to own it $22,000 into trying to solve this problem. And it's not solved because of all the silt that comes off that hill, we're constantly having to clean out the bioswale. And there are only 28 homes in our neighborhood, and we're, that's a lot of money for us to continually pay. And whatever the permitting it went through, it, the water issue obviously passed code, and yet, here we are, right? 28 homes trying to pay for something that we didn't have any part in. It just happened. And I would think after OSO, we should be more cautious and more willing to wait for more information, to get more updated information regarding slides. The second thing, or the, yeah, the second thing really is just the traffic. We're already dealing with some pretty severe traffic problems. In the mornings, there's no light at my street, and I wait, and I wait, and I wait, and I wait to get out. And same thing, going to Woodinville during rush hour or coming back to Bothell. If I want to come here, you know, at 6:30, I'm 20 minutes of traffic away, and I'm only half a mile. So, I don't see any plans for mitigating traffic as it is, and I can only imagine once one rezone goes through, the whole Riverside area will also be rezoned, and I'm just really concerned, you know, when we, when there's a storm event, like it's the snowstorm, it's miles and miles of traffic. It took like five hours last time in a snowstorm for the traffic to make it through Riverside. So, I would just ask that you be really cautious in thinking about this rezone and all of the future problems. I don't think Bothell's doing a great job keeping the streets they have up, so I don't know where the money's going to come from for mitigating. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Are there any other comments from the public? Yes, sir. And again, if you could state your name and address.
My name is Andrew Glynn, 17321, 106th Place Northeast. I'm actually a neighbor of Davina's, and I just wanted to add my two cents to this. My house, actually, I've had two landslides that essentially landed in my backyard. The first time, I assumed it was a fluke. You know, I cleaned it up myself, dug up the sod and redid it and everything. Then, it happened again two years later, even worse, and I had to spend several thousand dollars, you know, of my own money to clean that up. And as Davina mentioned, we spent, you know, tens of thousands of dollars as a neighborhood to try to mitigate the problem, but we really can't do anything. We're at the bottom of the hill, and the trouble's up at the top of the hill. So, you know, I don't know what can be done about that particular situation right now. But, I do think that going forward, we really need to think long and hard about what kind of development we allow on the slopes and at the top of the hills, where, you know, as more ground is covered, more runoff is going to end up going down over the hills, digging away, causing more and more landslides. And I just want to make sure that we all have that in mind, and as we change zoning regulations and look at permitting for houses and other developments in the future, because it's become a serious issue, you know, for me personally. It's been a huge pain, you know. Every time it's raining in the middle of the night, I'll wake up in the middle of the night three or four times, look out my window, see if my yard is flooding again. I don't really enjoy that, considering it rains like, you know, 10 months out of the year around here. So, really, I just want to add that emphasis that we need to take this really seriously, that the erosion and the water issues are a problem, and it needs to be looked into.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I might just give a few comments, and that is, a number of us, I think it could be all of us, have spent time along Riverside Drive, actually in your neighborhood. I've spoken, I don't know to either of you, but I've spoken to several of your neighbors. I'm aware of the runoff issues up above your neighborhood. And my concern is that we, going forward, that we don't repeat that, and that we do all we can to rectify what's gone on in your neighborhood. Staff has assured me that Bothell continues to learn lessons, and there have been other parts of our city that have had water problems. For example, in North Creek, where there was an office park built next to it, and it's, we've had floodings going into corporate data centers. It's just an issue that Bothell has. We have ridges, we have water flow, and we are getting better over time at mitigating this. And I've definitely pushed very hard from staff, and I'm assured by staff that our engineering is much better now than it was even at the time your neighborhood was developed. The question that was put in front of us really is not related to either, you know, the regulations concerning water management. That's going to happen regardless. The question that was put in front of us was, should there be a redesignation from an R-9600 to an R-7200 on a specific parcel? And in reviewing this, what we came to the conclusion, and I would welcome the others to speak as well, was that by actually going to R-7200, it allowed some flexibility in how those lots could be tucked in, and there could actually be better water mitigation with a different lot size. This is true of a lot of the new developments that are coming in. And so, we, staff actually came to us recommending the full 70-plus acres along there be changed, and what we decided to do was just this specific parcel, to recommend a change to R-7200. So, I just wanted to clarify for you that whether it stays at R-9600 or goes to R-7200, the water engineering and mitigation efforts would be the same. Are there any other comments, or? Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Claudia Elsmore. Hello, David.
I'm sorry, speak up.
Claudia Elsmore, 17320 Riverside Place.
Yep.
And I've come and talked to you before, time and time again, about the spot zoning for Mr. Furman's. You've heard recommendations of a plan unit development, which I know the Planning Commission doesn't like, but you've done it time and time again, all along East Riverside Drive. And the reason being is the slopes, over 15% grade, the soils. We've got it all from that last comprehensive plan, that there is soil erosion, it's critical ordinance area. It's got two creeks, and I'm speaking specifically about Mr. Furman's property. And the other PUDs all did some smaller lot sizes in order to get those houses in there with a 96R zoning. I just, I'm real, real concerned, because I have a feeling that we keep talking, and we keep telling you, because we live in this area. I'm on the river. The wonderful rain we had last Sunday brought the river up over five feet. So, it rose up over the bulkhead, over Brackets Landing, right up to the little bench over there. It subsided, but both of those creeks on Mr. Furman's property were both gushing into the river. We have, my neighbor has what, I'm sorry, I'm not sure about the street. I guess it's 100 and, huh, they're all misnamed here, but, oh, boy. Duck him? This one? It's this area right here. And that goes out into the river. I believe it's called the West Creek, and it was spewing, I mean, 20 foot out into the river. I'm just real concerned about the slopes again, the soil, the landslides that is documented, that you all are working on a comprehensive plan, the 2015, but you allowed spot zoning, which I'm not sure. I've got some contacts with SEPA right now investigating that. And I'm just, I'm just very concerned that this is going to set a precedence for the rest of that area. And I wish Mr. Valet would have came down and given me two hours for me to come and talk with you and take you around and show you what's happened also, or any of you, for that matter. I'd be happy to show you exactly what's happening down in that area, and the wetlands, the rivers, the creek, the soil, just everything that's down there, and the traffic. Oh, my gosh, 102nd and Main Street, what a mess. And there's been no traffic studies. The one that was done was for the gun range, which is on the other side of 405. So, I just wish that you really take consideration, and I know you're making a recommendation to the city to do the spot zone at 7200, but I think there's other answers. I think there's other solutions to this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, Commissioner Lee?
Oh, Claudia. I wouldn't be happy to come over and take a look at your place. I wouldn't. I'm sorry I haven't been able to make it by. I'm sorry I haven't come up to you and asked you when's a good time to come by, so I would like to do that, because we'll get to this subarea later in the meeting. I do think about this. I know I spoke out in favor of it. I do think about that decision I made quite a bit, and I don't take it lightly. Just wanted to let you know. I have seen the landslide maps. When I spoke that evening, I certainly was not in favor of the whole, the staff recommendation of expanding 7200 to the whole area. But, I'll leave it at that for now until we get to that subarea, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any comments from staff? None? Anything over and above what we've already discussed?
I guess I would just add that historically, since we adopted the comprehensive plan early in the 1990s, and adopted our first critical areas regulations, also back in the early 1990s, that we have, our philosophy has always been to let the critical areas ordinance manage critical areas issues and not zone property on the, based on simply on topography or critical areas or slide areas or anything else. That's essentially why we have critical areas, so that they can address any specific piece of property universally, regardless of the type of critical area that's there. So, I guess I would just add that.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
I have a question about that, if you don't mind. How does that align with other local jurisdictions in terms of how they view zoning versus critical areas ordinances? Do you have a feel for that?
I think I do have a feel for that. I think it's consistent with most other jurisdictions, if not almost all of them.
So, zoning is generally seen as not the area to try to?
Well, I think the, I think that used to be done in the past, but that was before cities had critical areas regulations, before best available science was used to create those regulations. So, for example, the GMA does allow for, if you have areas of exceptional size and scope and particular value in terms of natural resources, that you can put a lower designation on. But, in general, it discourages that. And as I say, with the advent of critical areas regulations and best available science, I think most jurisdictions, if not all, in the state of Washington, take the same approach we do.
Thank you.
And I've asked staff of this before, but I'll ask again, because I am aware of this specific neighborhood that was brought up. And we could have done a better job, I think, of managing that. But, how have our, how have our regulations improved, let's just say, in the last decade, in terms of managing water flow and?
You know, I'm going to let Bruce respond to that for a couple of reasons. One, because Bruce, I think, was probably here when Promontory was developed or reviewed, or shortly afterwards. And also, that Bruce tackles a lot of our natural environment issues, and he can probably respond to that fairly well.
Thanks for putting me on the spot.
Sure.
Basically, here's the situation. The situation is that most of the promontory and areas on Norway Hill were retained as an R-40,000 designation, primarily because of some of the reasons we're hearing here tonight. What occurred was that the areas along, I'm sorry, the areas along Riverside Drive have always had R-9600 or higher designation, so that's kind of part of the issue. And I do recall, when we did Promontory, I was, I came to work for the city just after the initial entitlements, the plan unit development and things like that were approved, and we were into the construction aspect. That was developed before there was an extensive critical area regulation. And in fact, I believe that the Riverside Glen project, where the folks that are living there now, I believe that came in at our initial critical area regulations. We've gone through four reiterations of the critical area regulations since then, gone to a very high standard as best available science-type document. So, there are a lot of things that are improving. Certainly, nothing has been perfect. It rarely is, but we strive to do the best we can. And we are continuing to see really interesting advances in the field of geotechnical engineering. One of the things we were trying to do, we were trying to make a trip to the also landslide area, because there was a special presentation that we, and unfortunately, we couldn't do that, mainly because we were doing this project. But, the idea was that there's been a lot of really interesting scientific stuff, just starting to germinate on that stuff. So, we believe that eventually, the critical area regulations will have even better controls for that standpoint.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Hearing none. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Carol Young, 11331, East Riverside Drive.
I'm sorry, what was that, ma'am?
Carol Young, 11331, East Riverside Drive.
Yes, thanks, Carol.
We've had so many researches over the years, you know, and the area is really, really desperate, because my house, the ground is, gets mushy and really awkward, but that, and I'm on a hill, and the house behind me was falling down into, cracking, and falling down into my house. They were afraid, so they had to build a, spend a fortune to build a rock support system to hold the house up, because that area, it's, I mean, it's black and white. Everybody knows that is really a knows, that is really a bad area for mudslides and all that kind of stuff. It's just the way it is. And I know that you're going to do what you're going to do, but, you know, I hope that you have a conscience on this.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paul O'Furman, 11203 Riverside Drive. I'll just have some handouts I'll give to you later. Basically, I mean, you've hit it on the head, the critical areas ordinance is where we protect the critical areas. Prior to 93, 95, areas were zoned R4. The critical areas, non-bitable areas, were actually included in parts of the lots, and they weren't designated separate tracks or anything else. Currently, all the critical areas will be in separate tracks. The buffers, everything else. In fact, the difference, right now, all of the area that could go into a residential single-family home, in 9600 square feet, that same dirt will go, could go into a single-family residential zone, 7200, just to lay out the math, really simple. After you've, going with the city's numbers, can we get overhead? Can I just put this up somewhere? Okay, perfect. Okay. Let's be like here, total net buildable area. That's after you reduce the 40 percent for critical areas, setbacks, all that sort of thing, plus another 20 percent for roads, you end up with approximate, you know, 144,000, obviously it's not to the dollar, I'm just going approximately, 144,000 square feet. That 144,000 square feet, right now, could be divided up into approximately 15 single-family lots. That same 144,000 square feet would be divided up into lots. Now, the kicker here is the impervious surfaces, the rooftops, the driveways, the patios, all that, it's the exact same in each zone. So if it's a 9600 square foot lot zone, the impervious surface will be 50,400 square feet. If it's 7200 square foot lot zones, the impervious surface is 50,400 square feet. And when you're looking at the environment, instead of having just that roadway, cul-de-sac, sewer, gutter, water, gas, everything that's going to those 15 houses in this one cul-de-sac, in order to accommodate those same 20 houses, you're going to have to sprawl. That's really what it comes down to. You would have to add another three and a half acres of development to accommodate the same five houses, five homes. The environmentally friendly way to, and again, just getting back, all the hillsides, everything, any conditions and concerns, they're all protected in the exact same manner under 9600 and 7200. The conditions are the same. That does not change how those restrictions and corrections are put there. Just a couple, all land is different, east, parts, east Riverside different from other parts. I have a basement that's bone-dried today, today. I was downstairs working out in my basement. I know in other parts of East Riverside Drive, there's a lot more water, I'm guessing, you know, and as far as the flooding issues, I know several council members, including a former commissioner, now Councilmember Sandberg, Lamb, Merrill, Gwynn, they're all out and helped get in all of the drainage situations set up, so that the water goes through 110th. There's a four-foot pipe now. The flooding hasn't happened since they put that in eight, nine, I don't know how many years ago. Those pipes are on both sides. They worked with, you know, all the neighborhood got together and worked and pushed this through. So the drainage issues, basically, in some, sorry, I'm taking more of my time tonight. And I'll hand this out to you. The net buildable area is the exact same. The critical areas will be protected under the exact same regulations. There's not one square inch of impact into the critical area. If it would happen, that'd be a complete violation of the code. So, any questions? Thank you very much, and as you can tell, I support that you continue. I was actually surprised, I thought this would be like other meetings where you're just going over commas and other things at this point, so, thank you very much. I have these for the record.
Thank you. So we'll add this to the record?
Yes, I'll add that as Exhibit 30X. I'm not exactly sure where we're at on that. I think we're 34, 35 or 36.
Great. Thank you. Any other members of the public to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I need to change before I can work. I just want to add in what Ms. Young was saying, is over the years on Riverside Drive, and just recently...
Your name and address for the record?
Kathleen Cox, 19418 108th Avenue, Northeast Bothell, Washington.
Thank you.
Every single time something's built up above on the top or in the slope areas, something happens down below. When they built the mobile home park, her basement flooded, they had to tear up the whole side of the house, dig down 12 feet, open it up. When they built the freeway, that they're editing up 160th up there, if anybody's willing to drive up their driveway and look at what they've done, they totally gutted the hillside, and they're bringing down, and all that water's rushing down, and the house behind her started falling down, and so they just spent, I think it was like $30,000 with the engineering stuff, to have the hillside backed up, so that the house wouldn't fall down the hill. So every time something like that happens, it, up above, it does impact down below, and to pretend that it doesn't, because you want to build more on it, those are the reasons why that was all done. I just want to, I just want you to, if you're going to go out and look at something, walk up the street those guys live on. See where that, just one block, one parcel of land away from what you spot-zoned last time. And so I think you should really take the time to go look at it. You know, it's kind of, would be kind of interesting to have you actually see it, and I would love you guys to drive down that road during the time of day when the traffic is really heavy, because there is no way anybody's going to get down there in 15, 13, or seven minutes, or three minutes. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Rob Furman, 11217 East Riverside Drive. Just a couple of quick comments, based on what's been said tonight. First, on the flooding, all the water coming off of Norway Hill, there's huge culverts put in now, and even with this rain on Sunday, there were no issues, we weren't having to go out and help, so we're thankful to the commission, the councils in the past, and everyone that got that done. Secondly, as has been stated, every property is looked at as a unique property when you go through the zoning process, and it's sad that some of the hillsides have had issues, and that some of the hills on the Norway hillside going down further on Riverside have had these issues. Our property hasn't in the last, I'm not going to say how many years, but I've got 110 to 120-year-old house that's built on the side of the hill. The foundation was placed, it's the old concrete blocks, they're still sitting in the same place they were when they put it in 110, 120 years ago. So there might be some slope and sliding issues down the street someplace, but on our property, there's no sign of that at all. It'll definitely have to go through all the geotech studies. Also, the guy who lives behind us, he's got a house that's right on the edge of the hill up there, Lloyd, who has the 10 acres behind us, and his house is built up almost right on the edge of that whole hill, and that's been there for, going on 70 years? So we definitely take it seriously that anything to do with flooding, we spent more time out there than anyone, sloshing through the mud and water when we had those issues, and thank heavens, that's resolved, and those culverts are put in. So, and anything that would be built on this property, obviously, the water has to be retained on the property, so if anything, it would actually keep less water from getting off the property if there is anything going on now. And the water that they're talking about, and the quantities that are flowing down, are coming from the church, the freeway, and already from up on Norway Hill. They're not being created on the property that's across the street from the river, next to nothing. Anyways, if you've got any other questions, I just thought I'd better chime in a bit for, I actually live there, and I know the property, versus what's going on kind of in the region or the general neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments, public comments at this point? Yes, ma'am?
Carol Young, 11331 East Riverside Drive. The one thing that I think it would be really high integrity, if you would have an independent study, there was only one person on, in your group that was willing to have that done, and we've had them in the past, and they've proven so much, and the traffic, on the Riverside Drive, there are so many retirement homes. There's the Wranglers Disability Groups that go to the senior center. There's so many disabled people and different people in the area, that if the traffic is bad, and there's an emergency, they might as well just die, because they're not going to be able to get this through once this all gets done, you know? I'm not talking about now, we, yeah, we have long waits, but at different times, but it's bearable. But you've got to know that when you build hundreds, and, you know, a lot more, and all that kind of stuff, and I understand people want to sell and all that kind of stuff, I'm not against that, but look at the whole picture. The Plan, the Planning Commission is about planning, not just making the money, but what the effects are for everything. So think about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, at this point, we will move forward with our public hearing, and what I'd like to do is similar to the format that we used last week, where we reviewed the, each of the subarea of the major citywide elements, and this evening, it will be reviewing the subareas, each one in succession. And just as a little guidance for us up here, if we have any questions or comments, let's pause and ask those questions, and need improvements. On the other hand, if we don't, let's keep moving forward. We've got 17 of these to go through. So, starting in order, and by the way, just to kind of open things up, I just wanted to express to staff my appreciation, I don't know if any of the others would like to, it's been a tremendous amount of work to pull this together, not only the work online, but actual, the materials put in front of us to give us the opportunity to do this. I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate it. I don't know if anybody else. Commissioner Clark?
Second.
Thank you. I think that's felt pretty strongly all the way up here, so thank you very much. So we're going to start in order, in the way that the subareas were provided to us. So first up is Queensborough, Brentwood, Crystal Springs. And just by way of interest for the public, what we were provided is language, both that just provides a profile of this particular subarea, and as I've mentioned many times before, Bothell's consists of 17 of these subareas. Call them neighborhoods, but they're actual sections on the map. And we are, we first clarify the current profile and description of it, and then with each one of them, there is a series of elements, and then goals, plans, and actions for that subarea. And that, obvious, as you can imagine, there are some that have greater attention than others. Some changes are made in each one of them. For example, we discontinued from the previous plan, the community services, and integrated that into housing and human services, so there was some consolidation. We also consolidated our maps. I think we were, were we at four, and now we're at three, which I think is better for all.
In land use, we were at six, and now we're at five?
Yeah, so we're trying to get better, but there's a, there's a map for each subarea that has a, there's a top of physical geography, an aerial photo, as well as land use designations or zoning map, that each one of us has reviewed for this. So enough of my introductory comments. Are there anything on, is there anything on the Queensborough, Brentwood, Crystal Springs subarea of questions? Commissioner Bleed?
On Queensborough QB3, under the streets, I would, I would like to maybe see, instead of it says, with regards to 9th Avenue Southeast, it says, "in a possible bicycle lane." I just, I guess I've, I've looked at, driven up through that area many times, and I guess I'd like to strike the word "possible" and just say, "and a bicycle lane." Because I just, it's a major corridor that cuts up right under the highway and connects those two areas of town, and I just, I just thought maybe that'd be appropriate. I don't know.
Let me...
So just under...
Under transportation, correct?
Yeah, under, it says, "minor widening, 9th Avenue."
Okay.
And it says, in the sentence, "in a possible bicycle lane," it just seems like a...
So just your thought on whether we really need qualifying language there, or do we want to have firm that up?
I would propose to take that to our transportation staff, and see if there was a reason for that qualifying language, and get back to you on that. Yeah, they'll be coming on April 1st, and so we can address that then.
Okay. Yeah, I know transportation is, is that pretty consistent across all the subareas where transportation will? The language we have here is not the final language for transportation.
Yes, each of the subareas contains a specific transportation section that refines the goals, policies, and actions of the transportation element. It's taken the transportation staff some time to go through those, but they will be bringing all of the subarea transportation sections to you on April 1st.
Okay.
So it's quite possible that if you have comments on those transportation sections tonight, they may actually be addressed, because they'll be updating a lot of the information in there.
Okay.
And that, this particular section is in the, in the subarea profile, they're focusing on the transportation goals, policies, and actions, but I will ask them to take a look at that one.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Just, not to get in a long discussion about it, but on QB6, I guess it is, because we're talking about the neighborhood business, I guess it's, it is really in a neighborhood, and I guess maybe I should go to the Bothell municipal code for this, but I'm in hopes that the, whatever we choose to extend at that intersection, it just kind of works in with the neighborhood with regards to lighting, and so a lot of people who are right up against the development aren't going to basically be staring at lights, you know, at 2:00 a.m. or anything like that, through their windows.
Yeah, our development regulations do address that.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move to the next one, which would be Shelton View Meridian. Are there any comments, questions, clarifications on Shelton View Meridian? Commissioner Cave? Why did I think you might have some on that?
I sent in a few changes. We've discussed, we know that we're going to do this study coming up after we're wrapped up the comp plan, but I just had what I thought were subtle changes, but if you read the language in there, maybe six years from now, it looks like it's a direction that we're already heading. I want to finish the study first, and then, then we can figure out the language or amend it. So, you know, if it's, if it's added density, that's the direction it goes, that's fine, but some of the language, I think, is already leading us in that direction, and we haven't really had a chance to digest it or look at all the facts.
Is there a particular part in the plan where you'd like to see the language? What I'm hearing you say is that it assumes this is already happening, and yet the study has not been completed, is that...
Correct. Yeah, so I sent some language earlier today. SV8, Policy Note 6, some of the language that was stricken out from the original text, along and steep, the steep slopes, has been removed, so a lot of the geography of the area is not even part of this description anymore. You guys have what I sent you, but I can kind of read what my revision of this specific policy point would be.
Okay, great. And I know you've provided some of that already to staff, right?
Yeah, I copied David on it, so...
So I've had a quick chance, just before the meeting here, to review that. The reason that I struck the word "steep" is that that area in the, that R 9600 area in the northwest corner of the subarea, it does include some steep slopes, but it also includes some relatively flat areas, like the FEMA site and the land around that. So I wanted to have a more inclusive description. If we wanted to keep a separate description for the steep slope areas, and then the rest of the 9600 areas, we'd probably need to divide that into, into two policies. But I think the other changes are certainly... Uh, but I think the other changes are certainly, um, are, are things that we can, uh, we can add in, um, to, to make the language about the future study more neutral in terms of the outcome, right?
Yeah, I'm fine with removing "steep slope," if that's the description, that makes sense. Um, the rest of the language, I'll just read how I amended it. Um, "land located along this deep part of," so we remove that, "subarea is currently zoned R9600. The Neighborhood Activity Center surrounding 228th and Meridian should be studied further to determine the best use of the land with regards to future open space and development." So.
And you provided that to staff?
Yeah.
Great. So, if, if that's the direction the Planning Commission wants to go, I think I, that's certainly a valid change.
Commissioner Cave, um, what is it, so you, you removed the reference to the Neighborhood Activity Center, is that, is that the, is that what you feel is, uh, I guess I'm not totally clear on what-
I've still got it included. I'm just not saying, "look for more intensive development associated with the Neighborhood Activity Center." I still mention the Neighborhood Activity Center, it just doesn't talk about intensive development-
Okay.
-as something we're looking at. Instead, "to determine the best use of the land," so, I mean, whatever that may be.
Okay. I'm all right with that. Is there any staff need for clarification on that?
I guess I would just say, the Neighborhood Activity Center isn't precisely defined in terms of boundaries, so I would just probably just say the, the area, uh, around the Neighborhood Activity Center, uh, at the beginning of it, so that it makes clear that we're, we're talking about the larger area.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great. Thank you.
So, I have a, I have several notes.
Sure.
I don't want to drag us down.
No, it's fine.
Um, second one was the action on the same page, or, sorry, SV9, Action 1. And it's sort of the same, same thought process. I'll read my example, you guys can kind of compare it to what we have written here. "Conduct a study to determine the appropriate zoning for Nike Hill area in the northwest corner of the subarea and adjacent areas of the Queensborough, Brentwood, Crystal Springs subarea, balancing commercial and/or mixed-use development at the corner of 228th and Meridian, zoning densities in the surrounding residential areas, and acquisition slash development of land for parks and open space." So, a lot of the same themes are there, I've just removed, um, intensive zoning from the Nike area, and denser residential development, because I just want to look through it fully before we add this to a subarea.
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, and again, I don't have it written here in front of me, but I was listening closely, and I think the language Commissioner Cave has proposed is, uh, keeping with the spirit of what I had hoped for that area, uh, and I think maybe rather than just assuming that there will be more intensive zoning, there may be, there may not be. And I think that's what you're trying to make sure that happens.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Could I, could I ask one question to staff? I, I, the question I have on that is, I'm assuming that when you say, "we conduct a study," that means that you'll probably be contracting that work out, um, is that to a, is that a possibility to a consultant or something? How does that typically get-
That's not our current anticipation.
So, so the study would be an internal staff study?
Yeah.
Because I, I guess my only concern would be if, if, if you take out the word "intensive" and just say, "conduct a, conduct a study of the appropriate," I'm, uh, we're, we're clearly not pushing them in a, in a direction anymore, but does it give them a, kind of a sense of what they're supposed to be doing? And, and, and do you feel like, is it immaterial, if you're doing the study, is it immaterial to you whether it says more intensive zoning or appropriate zoning? Is that-
The reason, uh, the wording, we, I included the word "intensive," because that, that was the request that we got from, from MyCarbon and Coast Equity Partners. So, that was the, what initiated the, the action in the first place. So, I think it's fine to change that to the approp-, to determine the appropriate zoning, um, but we will be, uh, operating from, from the request that we got and, and investigating the validity of that.
That being said, I, I, I support Commissioner Cave and what he said.
Thank you.
I've got one last one, SV-11. Um, "Under Parks and Recreation Open Space Policies, under Actions," it says, "include in future capital facilities plans, funding for acquisition." I don't think we can solve this one tonight, but, um, there is no park in this subarea currently. Their DNR is being used as a park, because it's technically open space. Um, but it kind of goes back to a comment that someone from the audience made a couple, couple weeks ago, that we've got to find, be creative on how we're going to fund these elements, and just having future capital facilities, I mean, that could be from now till 3,000, you know, I mean, there's really no end date, so it'd be nice if we could hone in on when something might take place, but maybe this isn't the right location to do so.
And I would just, uh, the, the language that's in there, uh, I got from our, our Parks, uh, recently departed, uh, Parks Division Director. Um, and, um, and I, I don't think we can, can put a, a date on it, um, but, uh, I, I thought we could expand the, the, the potential funding source. Uh, it, there are other funding sources besides our, our capital facilities plan, so based on, on this comment, I'm proposing, uh, changing the wording there to, to read, "include funding in future capital facilities plans," or from other available sources for acquisition and development, uh, of parks, of a park or parks to serve the, the subarea. So, um, that expands it a little bit, so it's not-
Yeah.
-just restricted to capital facilities plans.
That doesn't nail down the time, but it does open it up to more-
And I don't think that we can.
Yep. All right.
Could, could we, um, I guess somehow prioritize it amongst other things? I mean, not put a timeframe on it, but, but sit, make a statement like, "it is a priority to," or something like that? I, I guess, in light of what we're hearing from, you know, the people of One Bothell and the, and the desire for, you know, additional park space, and the fact that we know that Snohomish County is already deficient, the Snohomish County portion, I think this, since we originally considered this, we've gotten a lot of, I think, feedback from the public on, on the importance of parks, and I think, um, and also about the disparity of the parks between Snohomish and King County. And I, I wonder if maybe we could put, I don't know, some word in there that, that instead of just "future," because I think, Commissioner Cave, you're right, it is a very generic and, you know, it, it, could, could we do something that would, I guess, prioritize it more highly?
I think what we wanted, oh, excuse me.
Any other comments? Commissioner Stedman?
I'm wondering if there's any way to, to, um, to tie in future development, uh, having the developers, um, you know, provide for parks, recreation, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that, that's kind of what I'm anticipating seeing anyway, is obviously some negotiating back and forth with one or more developers in this, in this general area. So, is there a way to, is there a way to, you know, to firm that up in the language?
Would that be included in the additional sources? You know, there's, it could be capital money from the city, but it also could be a part of the development plan that the developer provides public access in some way in the land that they're developing?
And that, and that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, if that, if that makes sense.
Um, to, to, and I don't, I might ask Commissioner Bleet to, for his comments, but mine would be, um, I would weigh in positively on Commissioner Clark's comments about the idea of, if we can't say a specific time, and, and there's, that language is all throughout the plan, but perhaps on this, uh, making a priority. Um, so, some, something along the idea of, that the Planning Commission is trying to prioritize this, um, I, I would be comfortable with that. And I'm not wordsmithing it exactly for you, but the word "priority" in there.
The only concern is, uh, internal consistency, and, so we already have a, a PROSAP, the Parks and Recreation, Parks Recreation and Open Space Action Plan, which does identify three areas within the city as, uh, priorities for open space acquisition. The very north, um, uh, part of the, the city overlapping into Thrasher's Corner, or I guess overlapping between Canyon Creek and Thrasher's Corner, Fitzgerald, and, um, portion of Norway Hill, I believe. Um, and that was the, the Parks, uh, Director's, um, concern about, um, adding language in, in the subarea plans that, that it isn't aligned with what is in, in PROSAP, so, um, now, this area is within an area, um, in the PROSAP, uh, Neighborhood Parks, uh, Service Areas that, that is, is shown as, as being a gap area.
Could we then can say something like, "consistent with PROSAP"?
I think we could make some reference to, to this, uh, being in that, the gap area for Neighborhood Parks and PROSAP.
Why don't we look to do that then? Is that all right? Anything else?
No, that's all in.
All right. Uh, all right. Country Village, Lake Pleasant. Any comments or questions on Country Village, Lake Pleasant? Commissioner Bleet?
Let's see here. On Figure, Figure 3, maybe this is just a clarification on parks versus open spaces that I need to be better aware of. There's something called the Hanes Open Space, so it is an open space right now, and is it, is planned to be just an open space?
It probably will be. It's comprised almost exclusively of wetlands and wetland buffers, so it's probably going to be an open space type of, uh, an activity area.
Okay, so on CV4, this is kind of minor, I guess, in, in the scheme of things and keeping things going. I, I won't go into much detail, but under Parks and Open Space, I guess maybe we should change anywhere where it says "park" on there to "open space"?
It's still a park, though.
But it's still a park?
Yes. I mean, and we have, we have a number of categories of, that-
Okay.
-of activities that occur in parks. Uh, the classic one is Blythe Park, which has got almost 25 acres of open space, but it's still Blythe Park. It's not Blythe Park and Blythe Park Open Space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
On CV10, um, in the green portion at the very top on CV10, uh, under the paragraph that starts with "further," at the end, it just kind of ends, and I don't really, we'll have to, and it's leaving a sus- suspense there.
Yeah.
What would it, how should it read there?
And I think probably what it should say is, "as in some type of resident component to inject some needed population, uh, the Country Village Shopping Center will have to do other things to basically keep themselves going." There's a concern, one of the temp, some of the testimony you heard was that there, the Country Village folks are worried about how long their, their, uh, program is going to be viable. And I was trying to capture that, and I'll, I'll basically, I'll complete that thought for you. Yeah. And that's basically what is the best, you know, they're, they're going to have to look at some other options to keep, remain viable.
And I guess this is also just kind of a general comment, maybe this isn't the time for this, but I, I kind of spoke out on how I feel about Country Village, and I won't revisit, um, how I feel about it, but I know that people who come to visit me, including my sister from California, they, they, that's the first place they want to go. Um, I realize that we're probably going to make some changes there. I just, I don't know if there's any, with regards to when we start redeveloping, I'm, I'm not as familiar with regulations as some of the other people on, on the commission, but, you know, the way it's structured now, it just seems like it's going to be really hard for a lot of those buildings that are kind of unique to remain and be, uh, structurally up to the codes of 2015, but, and I, I find that a little hard to, to take, but, because I know it's going to change quite a bit if they start kind of moving into those buildings, so. That's just a point on that. Oh, yeah.
I was just going to respond real quickly. Uh, one of the things we talked about when we did this subarea was the fact that the buildings that are located within the Country Village Shopping Center were kind of an eclectic mix of different structures and housing types. It would be almost impossible to convert those to another type of a use. Um, and as far as their compliance with the International Commercial Code under today's standards, would be almost impossible to track. They just were not designed to be a long-term type of a, a retail facility. So, if there is some type of a, a development or some change to that area, and it's probably not likely, most of the change will probably happen in the western portion, but if there is some change, it'd be almost impossible to take those buildings and convert them somehow.
Okay, thanks Bruce.
Yeah, you bet.
All right. Are there any comments or questions with regards to Canyon Park? Commissioner Bleet?
I hate to do this, but I'm, I'm going to go back to Country Village, just one, one quick point on Country Village. So, just so I know, so I have a good clarification going forward into the future, there is a development that happened that seems to be kind of, uh, in conflict with a lot of the things as far as the natural element goes off of Bothell-Everett Highway, and they're still actually building onto the new, uh, structures. It's right off of Bothell-Everett Highway, it's on a very steep slope, and it's on Northeast 201st Street. How, how was that, uh, project allowed to go forward? And just so, in the future, I know when a possible project comes up-
On Northeast 201st Street and, and where is it?
Bothell-Everett Highway.
Oh, the Bothell-Everett Highway? You're probably referring to the-
The Leonard?
-retached condominium project?
Yes.
They're just on the eastern side. Essentially, what happened is, that's one of those examples where a full geotechnical engineering analysis was, was performed. And one of the things that's interesting is that people associate steep slopes with maybe some type of a, a hillside, landslide hazard or something like that. That is not the case underneath geotechnical science. There are many slope areas that are very firm, have been compacted well with the glaciers, and are incredibly suitable for development. Not incredibly su-, but suitable for development. That's one of those areas. Where we have our most problems with our soils is within the Norway Fin Hill area down there to the south, which has got a really different geology than most of the other areas within our city. Uh, so basically what you're seeing is, is seeing a situation where a full geotechnical analysis was performed, it was reviewed, peer-reviewed, basically, which is what we always do, by an independent, um, geotechnical service. And essentially, they identified that there is not a concern, even though the slopes are fairly steep, you know, and, and kind of depends on what you're looking at, but in that case, to develop on this, on those slopes, because they're very firm soils.
Canyon Park. Everybody's flipping pages and their heads are down, so I'll ask, uh, I have one question on Canyon Park. So, on, on CP3, we, uh, referenced urban, and the Planning Commission is recommending the city undertake a future urban design study, UDS, in conjunction with the potential implantation of a TDR program. We've, we've discussed TDR extensively, this is, we're not going to discuss it anymore tonight, we are, but we are going to be looking at it very much, uh, probably in 2016, correct? So, my question is around urban design study. Is that, and just take me back to, because I know we, we talked about this maybe, uh, six weeks ago. Is that in any way similar to the process we did downtown? How, what, what, what are we, when we say we're proposing an urban design study, flesh that out a little bit more for me in terms of what we're really recommending?
Sure, that's exactly what we're anticipating, that we'll do a large-scale consultant-driven, um, staff-assisted, um, urban design study for that entire area.
Great. That's, that's what I thought, but I just kind of wanted to clarify that, um, which I very much support. I have no other questions on that. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's move forward. Canyon Creek. Commissioner Bleet?
Yeah, this is an interesting one that I, I need to familiar, familiarize myself a lot more with, the LIDs. Um, I like, I like that. I- I like, I like that. That's exactly the kind of, not necessarily saying in this area, but I like, I'm kind of wondering why, I like the LID, I'm kind of wondering why we don't implement that into just development in general in Bothell instead of, it just seems like it makes a whole lot of sense for the area we live in. I like a lot of the things they talk about with regards to keeping, you know, stormwater on site, with regards to, you know, rain gardens on the individual properties versus the, I guess some people call them water prisons, you know, that are basically just big vaults for water. I don't know, I just, I just wanted to point out that I like that. And I just want to clarify, too, it says retention and creation of up to 40%. And so, so if I'm looking at a, so if I'm, if I'm looking at that map, and so, does that mean retaining 40% of what's currently there as far as like tree cover and natural element, or?
A little of both. Essentially, here's what this is. The Canyon Creek, as the Fitzgerald is the more well-known situation, but the Canyon Creek has a portion of what we call the North Creek Fish and Wildlife Critical Habitat Protection Area. And it's basically the watershed of a couple of small streams in that area that have got some pretty decent habitat, and basically probably some of the best habitat features we have in the, in the, in the city, frankly. And essentially what this is, this was an attempt on the city before a lot of the modern surface water provisions came into play, to have an area that was specially viewed, specially regulated, and specially considered from the standpoint of trying to keep that, those habitat features intact, so they weren't be destroyed further. What you're seeing is some of those really special provisions that were implemented within our Bothell Municipal Code under our titles 12, and it's chapters 60 and 62 respectively. And basically, what this does is this does a mandatory forest cover requirement, and that can be either existing, created, or some form between the two, as well as it got some provisions that you have to use the very latest surface water manual from this Washington State Department of Ecology. So those are some really advanced things that we've done in this area that are unusual within the, in the other parts of the city. Now, regarding the improvements to surface water flow, and that's an interesting point you make, that eventually, for low-impact development or LID, that's going to be applied citywide here in probably January 2016 or so. It depends on how this gets implemented. And essentially, what the very latest version of the Ecology Manual does is it has a mandatory LID, and you only get away from LID if you have a site condition that doesn't allow those type of features. But it's a very detailed process you have to go through to get to that point. So it is a really a different viewpoint than what we've ever had before. It has the same kind of approach as, well, critical area regulation in some aspect. It's really taken that site and basically looking at it as if it's in an existing forest condition, and then you start your calculation for your surface water runoff. So it's a really different approach than we've had, you know, even 10 years past. This is, this is something that just wasn't done. And that's where you see the North Creek Fish and Wildlife Critical Habitat. That was kind of generated in 2004, 2005, got, it got implemented in 2007 and 2008. So a lot of this information was actually reviewed by the City Council last year, and they did a lot of changes to these things, because we were having some issues with the regular language was. But there's continuing changes in that LID and low-impact development provisions. Long answer, I'm sorry, it's an involved subject.
Mr. Clark?
If I could just add to that, in my experience, in these other areas, as I say, there already is a big push to implement LID facilities on current projects. They've got a green PUD ordinance that is in place now that, that has a lot of that type of thing in it. I think what they also, what we need to also do is make sure that there is a reason or an incentive for the development community to take advantage of those things, to want to do the LID. Because they are, in a lot of cases, they're more expensive, they take longer to implement, they, the monitoring and that sort of thing is more involved, so I think you've got to, there's going to be a trade-off to encourage the development community to want to do that.
All right. Moving forward, Fitzgerald 35th. Are any comments, changes, questions, improvements? Mr. Blee?
On NC Ten, under Part Eight, under NC Ten, it, so, so basically, in that business park, we're saying that buildings can be built seven to 10 stories, 100 feet up. I, I'm all for creating density, that just doesn't seem to, I don't know, fit in with the valley floor below, but, I don't know, I just thought that was interesting. I hadn't read that through before, but I guess it's probably been discussed at length, so. That's more a comment, you guys, I just, I don't know if anybody else has a comment on that, but it seems, that's quite a bit higher than even the downtown corridor, so.
Are there any comments from staff on that as to the origin of that language?
Well, that was actually the code amendment we did in the year 2000, I believe, 2000, 2001. And it was part of the study's strategy to create some capacity, residential capacity, population capacity, as well as, again, trying to take advantage of Interstate 405 and the transportation opportunities with that, even though that's not maybe quite as good as it used to be considered as an idea. But that's part of why that was come into play. The other thing is that you see the really high, the 150-foot tall building provision? That was, there's some very specific manufacturing techniques that made really tall stories. And that was an attempt to make sure we could accommodate the, and it's basically the biomedical innovation zone that the city is part of. And so all this was part of that package to try and come up with a way to, when get our residential capacities increased, so we could maintain some areas in the city that had an R-40,000 designation, as well as a course to accommodate that biomedical field that had those really hot, tight, tall ceiling height requirements. And so that basically was, that's what it was done.
Anything else?
I have to have one, it's more of a comment than a question, but the previous page, NC Nine at the top, "Design and Provide Final Engineering for Lieutenant Nicholas Madrazo Memorial Park." Very glad to see that included. I've mentioned this before, I want this, it's a priority for me that this remain not only in our plan, but I would like to see this, if there's a way, though, again, we could, whether it's Pro Sap or it receives some type of priority, similar to what was proposed earlier, I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah, and I can report that the city has hired a design engineering firm to do the final design element of the project, basically the nuts and bolts things. And there is funds available to start the project, so there will be some construction activity occurring.
Great. Thank you very much. Bloomberg Hill. And probably the biggest change that I noticed on this one was just the name change, that this was called Holly Hills, Pioneer Hills, Morningside, but was changed in 2010 to better reflect its primary geographic feature. So, I think that's about the biggest change. I don't think we, there was much in the way of a substantive change on this particular subarea.
Yeah, there was a small change to the map. And basically, that was to, there's a project called Falcon Ridge Subdivision, Falcon View Ridge Subdivision. And basically, what happened was that they have some properties that are split zoned.
Right, right.
And so what we did is we decided to make that zoning follow where those actual lots are.
Yep. Exactly. Any comments or questions on this? The only thing that I would add, and this had to do with the Hallett request, if there would be a way, right now, what the note says on BR Six is, "The Planning Commission deliberated at length on this topic and determined it is conceivable to accommodate the Hallett request and preserve the existing business." We've had extensive discussions around how we hope to achieve this. The only thing I would, perhaps we could add as this goes forward to the City Council is, is that in our last meeting on this, we heard a possibility that the neighboring business, the siding company, might be willing to pay the additional taxes, and I haven't heard since then what's happened, whether they've spoken with the Halletts or not, but that there is a possibility that they, the two of them might work out that since the taxes was, it seemed the Hallett's primary concern, and therefore, there's a possibility that their request could be withdrawn. And I don't know how we would note that, but I just would like, I think that's a more complete kind of picture of this particular request going forward.
Yeah, the one thing I was a little bit hesitant on putting that into is, that's kind of one of these party, private party agreements.
Right, exactly.
Go north or south.
That's true.
And I'm always nervous about putting that kind of thing, and maybe having somebody reading, "Well, what is this?", and how is the city involved with some type of private discussion thing.
Yeah. Perhaps then, rather than making a language change, when this comes in front of the City Council, and I'm sure we'll get asked about it, if one of us on the Planning Commission could be there with you to just kind of add a little more language around that, so they'll have the better context of what really could happen here. I think that would be great, so.
Steve, I got one quick thing on that.
Yeah, Mr. Blee?
Just with regards to the zoning change at 160th and 124th.
Oh, yes.
I know we've heard a lot from a lot of the residents with regards to the runoff, and I maybe became more familiar with water retention issues than I was in the past on that one, because that's somewhat of a different zoning, that's a very different zoning than the housing around it, I guess. I just hope when that, if they choose to redevelop that area and the council chooses to go with that new rezone, I hope that there's quite a, that is a very busy intersection. I hope there's a lot of visual clearance for people coming in and out of there. I think it's going to be a pretty hard place to get in and out of, but, so I just hope that that's kind of taken into account, with regards to that, because it's very different than the, than the zoning around it, so.
Yeah, in fact, one of the interesting things about it is, this is one of those, you know, inheritances from King County, and they had an R-8 zone. And originally, the city had decided to put in R-5400D, which was kind of a pretty close match. And then we had some testimony from the property, and saying, "Listen, it just doesn't work for our configuration for a lot of reasons they identified." And the commission said, "Yeah, that's okay, but we're going to only give it to R-5400A, which is basically attached, give them a little more flexibility in the, in the lot layout configuration provisions." But you're absolutely right, they will have to go through a pretty extensive traffic engineering stat, analysis. And one of the things the city has, we have standards on how far driveways can be from intersections and things like that, that are based upon some national standards, Ashto and, oh, Model, anyway, I can't remember all the acronyms. But basically, the idea is that those would be applied to this property, and it's basically in our standards.
And I hope that would be one of those, maybe those future developments that we use as lid practices. I mean, it looks like it'd be a prime example of one of those, so.
All right, moving forward, West Hill. Now, here we have a really extensive packet that was put in front of us, and Dave, I know in your presentation, you noted a few of the changes. I have one question, and then if there are others, we can ask them at this point. So this 2.2 parking spaces that, let me just see if I'm following, so if we're, if we're proposing 0.75 per bedroom, 2.2 sounds to me kind of like three times that. So are we saying for a three-bedroom, which would normally pencil out at 2.2 or 2.15 or whatever, that we would then round down, and for a three-bedroom unit, they would have two parking spaces required? Is that, am I?
Yeah, if somebody were to build a single three-bedroom townhouse, they would provide, have to provide two spaces. If they did two, they'd have to provide four. If they provided, if they built three, then they would have to do a fifth, I mean, a seventh.
A seventh, yeah.
Six plus one, because we round up from the nearest half.
Great. Any other questions regarding?
So, just, so, as it's written currently, a three-bedroom unit would require 2.25, so even more than we require citywide. And then four-bedroom would require, you know, three.
Three.
So, it really does become a disincentive for doing larger, family-oriented housing downtown, and, so that's the primary reason for, for doing this.
Yep. Mr. Clark?
Dave, in your presentation, you talked a little about the change on page 55 of this subarea, and it's Item B1, "Contiguously permitted pedestrian-oriented retail." Would you mind just spending a little bit more time on that? I didn't quite, I don't think, grasp exactly what you were saying on that.
Well, let me actually give you a specific example, the one that kind of raised this issue again to our, to our attention. The old, the Eagles facility on Main and 103rd, that's, they've shut down, and we were approached by a prospective buyer who wanted to do what would be considered a pedestrian-oriented retail. And if it was just done as a tenant improvement, it would probably be allowed, and that's probably what they're going to do. But if they were actually redeveloping that site, then the full downtown requirements would come into play. And the way the code's written, it says that, that you can only do pedestrian, and that's in a downtown neighborhood district. You can only do pedestrian-oriented retail if it's either adjacent to the downtown core or if it is an extension of continuous shop fronts from the downtown core. So even, even then, under that definition, shop fronts, you might debate whether the Wells Fargo Bank is, the use is a pedestrian-oriented retail, but it's, it's not really developed as a shop front, traditional. And then you have the Sundance Heating Supply Business between that. So, strict reading of the code as it's written now wouldn't allow pedestrian-oriented retail there, even though it's perfectly appropriate use, and actually, we'd probably like to see that whole block redeveloped with pedestrian-oriented retail. And so the idea was valid to let the growth emanate from the core, but from a practical standpoint, we can't say, "No, you can't do it here, you have to buy Sundance and swap properties," or what, you know, it just wasn't practical. So, and we've run into that in other situations, and we just feel that it's, that the, the problem that was designed to solve isn't actually, isn't actually transpiring, that if anything, we're seeing in new development, particularly developers kind of reducing the retail to the minimum. There's just not a real strong market for, for retail yet, so.
So, I guess the question I have about that is that you guys are eliminating a section here. Is there another, potentially another way to do this? That, I mean, it sounds like it's bigger than just the Eagles Lodge issue, or potentially bigger than that. What concerns me is if it is just the Eagles Lodge, is there another way that you can allow a, I don't know whether it'd be a deviation or a variance or a director's interpretation or something that would allow you to make a decision in a specific case without having to go back and change the to go back and change the underlying regulations?
We discussed that, or I discussed it with the director about whether we could put a, that it would only be allowed within X feet, 100 feet, 200 feet, of other pedestrian-oriented retail. And his feeling was, or through a director's interpretation, his, the director's feeling was that there just, really wasn't a need for this restriction, based on what we're seeing here. There are a lot of other areas where this could come into play, all along the houses on the north side of 183rd. In fact, the corner of 183rd and 102nd is, are separated from downtown retail by the Lutheran Church. Lutheran Church is not likely to convert to retail, but that is a place, especially for kind of incubator retail businesses that are starting up and maybe can't afford Main Street rents, seem to be perfectly appropriate there, so.
So, is the result of this, then, that we might see an expansion of that, kind of that shop front look of, that is on Main Street, spread throughout, you know, kind of from a radius out around that, do you expect?
Well, actually, that's, the downtown plan really does call for that. Downtown neighborhood zoning is required to not build right up to the sidewalk, but within 10 feet, so it foresaw the possibility that the pedestrian-oriented retail could expand into the downtown neighborhood district, but it tried to restrict it with a very restrictive measure that just, we don't feel is practical.
The reason I brought this up is that, the way I thought I heard you say it, which obviously was incorrect, was, the concern that it gave me was that we were kind of making code changes or regulation changes for the sake of an individual property owner that, as opposed to having it be a kind of a broader, hey, we really need this in this area, you know? And it sounds to me like it is the second thing that I just said, that it's, it would concern me, and I think it sets a, if it were the other way, it sets a precedent, I think, of, you know, kind of letting people selectively, you know, you change the code to suit somebody, and I think that, it's kind of like spot zoning, I guess, in a way, but that doesn't sound like what, really what is happening here. Is it, am I correct on that?
The latest example that kind of reminded us that this was an issue, is the latest of several instances where we've, we've kind of grappled with this and found it to be problematic, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cave.
David, you mentioned one of the loopholes, maybe the podments or microunits. Can you lead us a little down the road? How are they looked at currently? Like, if there was a shared living space, individual bedrooms, how would the city kind of calculate the parking spots on those individual units?
That's something that we need to look into a little more closely, so I don't have a good answer for you right off, right off the bat, which is why when we were drafting findings, the finding for this one included the need to further study that issue. But hopefully, by putting the findings off one week, I'll be able to come back to you on April 1st with some better answers for that. But essentially, when this issue came up, when we were talking about changing the parking requirement in the general downtown corridor, there was some discussion of podments then, and how we would deal with those. And the answer was, is that the, having a parking requirement based on the number of bedrooms essentially will preclude the traditional podment-type developments. But by establishing a cap per unit, 2.2 per unit, then it does raise the possibility that someone could come in with a seven-room suite of apartments that share a kitchen, and they would only be required to provide 2.2 parking spaces. So, we need to look at whether we need to define a dwelling unit in a way that would preclude that, or whether, I really need to look at the building code definition of dwelling units and see if that provides some protection there, so.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it sounds like we're on the right path. I know they've ran into issues in Seattle, so I just want to make sure that we had something in place, or at least thinking about it. Another question, kind of contentious during the original downtown planning was the building height issue. Previous meetings, you guys have noted that you really haven't heard anything from any other citizens, or any, just positive feedback from the business community. Can you guys expand on that a little bit, or have you heard any new information from anyone?
We have not, and I do want to, you know, continue to emphasize, we're not increasing the number of floors that can be built, we're just providing some more flexibility in the floor-to-floor height and some additional height, only in those two central downtown zones. So, oftentimes, the community withholds comments until these issues reach council. That could happen on this one, but so to date, we haven't had any, any negative feedback on that.
Okay, thanks. My last question was, I saw today that there was an RFP for a parking study on the website for downtown.
Yes.
Do you guys have a feeling for when that may be completed? Just curious on what the timing looks like for that.
What's being done right now is, we're putting out, I think it's actually RFQ, if I'm not mistaken. We're, we've identified a number of parking issues from the parking requirement for new development to finding a suitable location for a park-and-ride lot, so that we can move the east-west bus routes up to 185th, to just on-street parking issues, and potential need for developing a cash-in-lu-of program. So, there's this whole slew of issues, and some of the recent developments have raised that issue. And when council did approve, or actually, modified the Planning Commission recommendation on the parking, going to a per-bedroom count in the general downtown corridor, they did direct staff to do, do a new parking study. So, what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be talking to a number of consultants about all of these issues and how they would approach them, and we'll kind of prioritize which ones we need to tackle first. So, we don't really have a firm timeline, it's a little bit open-ended right now, but we're starting the conversation.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Lee.
On page, let's see, 97, under sustainability guidelines, probably should have brought this up at an earlier date. I'd love to see something in there, and I'm hoping maybe the group be open to, as a new business item in the coming year, would be to have a person come in from maybe a couple different solar companies. I'd love to see a lot of photovoltaic solar capacity built on some of the new structures downtown that basically, essentially doesn't have any, you know, perfect solar access. And then, I know a lot of people in the community now have electric cars, or partially-electric cars, and I think it's got some of the highest traction in the United States, right here in Seattle, and so I'd really like to see the city kind of move forward with, I don't know if it's necessarily requiring it, but definitely pushing to have some type of electrical charging stations available to people who want to come to Bothell to have dinner, or even to live downtown, so.
We have, in the relatively recent pass, passed a number of alternative energy guidelines that included rewriting our code with regard to solar, wind, and geothermal energy to remove some impediments in the previous code language and encourage more of that. And then, we also did a code amendment with regard to electric vehicle charging stations to allow them in all zones. Well, not all, but essentially to remove, again, impediments that might have been in the code. We didn't go as far at that point to actually requiring charging stations or parking spaces in new development, but that's, that is something that was also brought up fairly recently, and we could take a second look at.
Anything else with regards to downtown? I had one, I had one last question, and it's on page 50. The, it's the second note on the left in the bottom. Note, the proposed extension of SR522 corridor district into the Wayne Golf Course Clubhouse would require revising and reformatting this map. I know early on in the whole Wayne Golf Course discussion, there was some discussion of potentially extending the downtown subarea to include the clubhouse area, but I just want it kind of clear that the Planning Commission has taken no action on that, and right now, if you were to read that, you might, I don't know how, the pro-
No, that's a good, I should have removed that next box.
Kind of implies that we're suggesting it or something, I just, I don't want that to be the case, and I think everybody up here would agree with that.
I agree, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'll remove that.
Waynita Simons, Norway Hill. I'm seeing nothing, no additional questions, comments, or is there? Mr. Lee.
Yeah, with regards to the rezone down on Riverside Drive, and I guess, and also, something we haven't even talked about today is the, on the north side of East Riverside Drive, the rezone there, that's very interesting, and it's also very close to the river. With regards to the one rezone request to the 7200, I'm under the impression that, you know, that there will be, that area will be studied very seriously, you know, critical areas will be, you know, abided by. And it sounds like, I've heard from a couple people, the water does come through, I was able to see the larger culvert that was installed. I don't know if this additional capacity of additional units will require an additional culvert to be put in, should the development happen, but I'm just, I'm putting a lot of confidence in the people that are making determinations. We did see the landslide map, so, and as Bruce mentioned, it is a very slide-prone area, so I'm just, when I spoke out in favor of that rezone, I was under the impression of, you know, that these things, and they will be, but this is a very sensitive area, and so I guess I just wanted to put that out there, that I don't, I think it's unlike a lot of the other areas in the city that we talked about rezoning, so kind of an interesting one, so. That's what I just wanted to say on that.
Thank you. Mr. Cave.
My stance really hasn't changed since our last meeting. I think we need single-family homes closer to the downtown, and this property is located near the downtown core, so I'm not saying that 7200 never makes sense on East Riverside Drive, or never makes sense on the hillside, but I do think there is something that can be learned over the next few months into January. I don't want to postpone this forever, but I haven't done the same traffic study that Commissioner Clark did, but I drove it twice this week, and at 3:55 on Monday, it didn't take me any time at all, it probably took me 10-second wait. Last Thursday, it took me seven and a half minutes at 6:00 PM, so it's a varying traffic issue, but I guarantee there is a traffic problem. Mr. Challenger brought up last time that it's a lot of cut-through traffic, it's not a lot of people that live in the area. I would, I would tend to agree with him. That being said, I don't necessarily want to compound the issue until we know what we're dealing with and have a potential solution ahead of it. Now, compounding the issue with five houses in addition on top of 15 may not seem like a lot, but my concern is still the slide issues, and critical areas do a lot to alleviate some of my fears, but there's a study being done by King County that'll be done at the end of the year. I just, I still think that we can learn something between now and then, so that's just my take.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions with regards to Norway Hill? Okay, moving forward, Locust. Oh, you know, I had one question with regards to downtown, so I'm sorry. There is some new language that staff has proposed. Did you need a motion from us approving the languages?
No, you'll make, at the end of this process, at the end of April 1st meeting, we hope.
You'll get that, we'll get that.
An overall approval of the changes.
Thank you. Locust, 14th West. Dampson Logan. Filbert Winesap. Thrasher's Corner Red Hawk. Okay. Now, Mr. Lee.
So, we were talking about a five-lane highway extension, or five lanes on 524, going to Maltby, I believe, so this is probably very simply the case, but one of those lanes is a turn lane, so it's just two each direction and a turn lane in the middle? Because there's references to like, changing that road to five lanes, so I assume it's just going to be two in each direction and a turn lane?
Yes, I believe so.
And that's a transportation question, I could have held off on that.
I believe the additional lane is actually a through lane, so that would be a five-lane section through there. But we'll confirm that with the transportation folks and bring that information back to you on the first.
Okay, thanks.
So, at this point, I think we're ready for a motion to continue the public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update to April 1st.
I make a motion we continue the 2015 periodic plan and code update till April 1st.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Looking, moving forward in our agenda, I don't think we have any other items, study session, old business, any reports from staff?
None tonight.
Reports from members? At this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Yeah, Commissioner Cave. Yes, well, the answer is yes, it is canceled, so just to clarify our calendar, so next meeting-
Yes, we need the additional week to prepare your findings, so we're asking that we not meet on March 25th and instead meet on April 1st.
Right, so our next meeting will be on April 1st.
Correct. Thank you.
Is there a motion to-
Actually, there is, I do have one report from staff. It's probably, we should probably note that Commissioner Lee was reappointed at planning, at the council meeting last night. They deferred an action on the other empty seat, so that'll be taken up on April 7th, I believe, yeah.
Great. Congratulations to Commissioner Lee. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.